A little slow, it's like loading. And then you get crashed on those. Does that happen?
Have your attention please, we'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the planning board for February 3rd, 2025. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 23rd, 2025. Any of the board members have any comments or corrections on the minute?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a few small things here that had I noticed early, I would have actually reached out to Dylan. But at the top of the minutes, it says it was Monday, January 23rd, it should be Thursday. So if we correct that. And then I believe Lucia should actually be moved up to under the members present as well.
Yeah.
So if we can make that revision. And with that, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes with the revisions.
Okay, we have motion on the floor, do we have a second? Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair, Board Chair, sending opposition here, none, the minutes are approved. Okay, moving along, we have one public hearing this evening, which is 463-473 Gorm Street, which is a site plan review. DeSantis Development LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board to construct a new residential building with 39 units at the above address. The subject property is located in the urban mixed-use zoning district and the multifamily mid-rise overlay district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the Lowell Planning Board per Section 11.4.2 of the Lowell Zoning Ordinance. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Attorney Catherine Flood here on behalf of DeSantis Development LLC for site plan approval under Section 11.4 of the City of Lowell Zoning Ordinance to construct a five-story building consisting of 39 residential units, a property located at 463 to 473 Gorm Street. Here with me tonight is Adam DeSantis, the manager of the LLC, Jack Sullivan, the architect from Gavin &amp; Sullivan, and Mira Cousins from Civil Design Consultants, the engineer. The property is in the urban mixed-use zoning district in the MFOM overlay district. The property currently consists of two lots of land consisting of approximately 15,562 square feet with a vacant one-story building. As you can see from the site plan submitted, the proposed development has frontage on Gorm Street and South Highland Street. The access to the development will be a 22-foot-wide driveway off of Gorm Street. The proposed development will have five stories of residential living space consisting of 39 units. The building entrance lobby will be on the Gorm Street side, as shown on the architectural plans. The building also has entrances on South Highland Street, the northerly side of the building, and the westerly side of the building, which is the parking lot. Each grade-level unit has an individual entrance to either the parking lot or Gorm Street. The upper-story units are accessible through the entrances off of Gorm Street, South Highland Street, or the driveway side. There will be five studio units containing approximately 383 to 468 square feet, and 34 one-bedroom units containing approximately 570 to 637 square feet. The studio units, as shown on the architectural plans, consist of open space living, concept with a kitchen, living area/bedroom, and a full bathroom. The one-bedroom units will consist of a kitchen/living area, bedroom, and a full bathroom. Each unit will have a washer and dryer. As shown on the architectural plans, the development will contain bike storage racks for residents with access from the parking lot side of the building, as shown on the plans. Due to the development being located within the MFOM mid-rise overlay, there are minimal dimensional requirements associated with the development, all of which are satisfied with the current proposal. There is no onsite parking required for this development since it's within the multifamily overlay district. However, the applicant is proposing 13 parking spaces on the lot. If residents have cars and parking is not available onsite, the development is located within 1,500 feet of an entrance to the Gallagher Terminal Garage, a five-to-10-minute walk. The development is also close to a bus stop on Gorm Street that provides access to the Gallagher Terminal, which will provide access to the MBTA commuter rail and several bus routes. The access to the development will be provided by the 22-foot access driveway off of Gorm Street on the northerly side of the building. As part of the application, we submitted a transportation demand management plan, which was reviewed by the city, and we addressed all the comments. Per the traffic study conducted by the Engineering Corp., the development is anticipated to generate a minimal number of motor vehicle trips. Further, as noted in the comments from the city, the fire department confirms that the access is adequate. Snow removal will be on the landscaped areas shown on the site plan. In the event there is excessive snow, it will be removed off-site. As you can see from the site plan submitted, there is a dumpster at the rear of the lot, and it will be adequately fenced. This development is consistent with the intent of the overlay district and will help the city increase its housing needs. Further, it is a major improvement of the current use of this property. I'm going to turn the mic over to Mira Cousins to address the site plan and go over it for you.
Thank you, Catherine. For the record, I'm Mira Cousins with Civil Design Consultants. So I'll briefly talk about the existing conditions and go through a little bit more detail on what we're proposing here. So the site is currently fully developed with an existing vacant building surrounded by pavement. The site has 60 feet of frontage on South Highland Street and 145 feet on Gorm Street. There are existing curb cuts on South Highland and on Gorm Street that provides access to the site. All existing utilities tie into the mains located in Gorm Street. There are currently no stormwater management controls on the site, so runoff sheet flows directly into the city's combined system untreated. So what we're proposing here includes a five-story, 39-unit, multifamily building with a building footprint of approximately 5,765 square feet. Modifications to the existing curb cut on Gorm Street is proposed to provide access to the 13-space parking lot. We are proposing to enhance the streetscape along Gorm Street with the installation of four tree wells to provide shade and aesthetic improvements. For landscaping within the site, we are proposing 16 trees and 22 shrubs. As Catherine mentioned, a fenced dumpster enclosure is planned at the rear of the building for waste management. For stormwater management, a subsurface detention system is proposed to store stormwater from the entire rooftop area and release it gradually through an outlet control structure matching pre-existing peak flows. Runoff from the entire parking lot will be captured in deep sump catch basins in the parking lot and routed through a water quality structure to achieve that 80% TSS removal before discharging into the city's combined system. We met with the city engineer a couple of months ago to review our proposal and discuss the site constraints, and she agreed with our approach. We'll continue working with the city to address any additional questions they may have regarding the stormwater system. And lastly, we received the city's review letter dated December 31st, and we provided a response to all their comments. And the revised plans that we submitted on January 17th addresses all of their comments. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jack Sullivan to go over the architecture.
Technology. For the record, Jack Sullivan, Gavin &amp; Sullivan Architects, Warren Street Lowell. Catherine's done a great job describing the building, but I'll fill in some blanks. So as you know, we have 39 units, 34 one-bedroom units that range from 570 square feet to 637 square feet, five studios that range from 383 square feet to 468 square feet. The exterior of the building is a mix of stone, composite metal, pottyboard siding. The building will be solar-ready, and all rooftop equipment, as needed, will be screened. As she said, there's bike storage within the building. The building is fully handicapped. There'll be 32 group-one units and two group-two units. It's an elevated building. Total height is 57 feet. Top of the parapet, no, that's the top of the parapet, the height of the building is 53 feet. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, you have the video? Show the video. Dylan, can you turn the light down? Can you turn the light down? Oh, never mind, never mind.
Let me close out of it. I don't see like a play bar.
No.
Maybe it just takes a minute. Yeah. In the meantime, I think we can take some questions, and then if this comes up, we'll play it for you guys.
Anything else on behalf of the applicant?
That is all.
Okay. At this point in time, I'll, okay, there we go.
Here it is. So this video is a view coming down Gorm Street towards the connector. And this is pulling into the parking lot, the, oh, the Enterprise parking on the right-hand side. I've worked with Luke Bouchard from Enterprise Bank. They're going to keep their parking, and they're in full agreement with this.
Anything further? On the opposite?
Yep.
Okay, at this point in time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody here would like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none, any who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. My name is Attorney Michael Zame. I own the building that is at 375-379 Gorm Street, which is on the triangle-shaped parcel just before you get to where this project is proposed for. And clearly, from looking at the design, and it looks like a beautiful building, looks like, I don't know Mr. DeSantis at all, looks like, you know, it looks like a quality project, looks like all the design, everything's there. The problem is, is that parking is a huge issue in the neighborhood already. There is a problem where the backs on South Street, which is the back of the building, fills up at night with people that live in the, on the side streets, you know, to the, on Keene Street and to the left-hand, to the left-hand side in between the gas station and a few, and the Enterprise Bank, and then further up the street. So we have a lot of off-street, on-street parking there now. Anytime of day you go by there, those areas are all filled up with parking. Here, we are proposing 39 units with 13 parking spaces. The right-hand side of the parking lot, although it looks, it appears on the diagram that there's going to be parking there, that is licensed parking to Enterprise Bank. So those spaces aren't available to, to this applicant. And then looking at the, the transportation plan, if you will, transportation management plan, it says the overflow parking can go over and park at the LRTA's parking. That's not going to happen. And so I don't know how they can say that's where the other people are going to park. Can they force them to park there? No. So that's our concern, from my perspective, is it's going to create a traffic nightmare and a parking nightmare that are in a very, in already very congested neighborhood. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is John McDonough. I live at 26 Highland Street in lovely Lowell, Massachusetts. First of all, I want to thank the board for your service. It's not an easy job. So I'm sure you guys did your homework, rode around the neighborhood, checked it out. So I'm just going to read you some of my notes here. I'm opposed to the 463 Gorm Street project, the former Heinz Tavern, in its present form. As a resident and business owner on Highland Street my whole life, the neighborhood has grown over the years. Currently, our neighborhood is very condensed. It will be dangerous, difficult, and heavy traffic for anyone trying to leave that site, the former Heinz Tavern, anytime during the day. From 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 in the morning, they're lined up to get on the connector. From 3:30 in the afternoon till 6:30 at night, they're lined up to get off the connector. As proposed, the 39 units, roughly that represents 80 cars. They have room for 15. Like my neighbor said, nobody's going to walk over to the Gallagher Terminal. I invite anybody on the board to park in my funeral home parking lot and take a walk over to the depot and to see how easy it is to do that. Right now, we let the Rogers School use our parking lot at the funeral home every day. There's not enough parking for the teachers, for the parents to pick up their kids. Enterprise Bank, as already mentioned, uses half their parking lot already, and they're not going away. Very, very congested neighborhood. The parking is the biggest issue. It's .3 spaces per unit. And if you can only imagine, let's take one, two, let's take six chairs out of that, away from you guys, and we'll see musical chairs, who's going to get the one or two chairs left. It's not fair to the folks that are going to move in there. Everyone who goes home has a right, a privilege, and an expectation that they can park their car close enough to carry their groceries in the house and not have to come back outside. I know it's a hard thing for these folks to try to move into the neighborhood. It looks like a beautiful building, but I'm very sorry, you just don't have enough parking. That's my biggest gripe, and the congestion on Gorm Street, you've got to spend a morning there. Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Not opposition? Hearing none? That portion of the public chamber gets closed. I'll just start off by saying that, so since the city council, they created the multifamily mid-rise overlay district, they don't need one parking spot. They don't need any. None. So our hands are tied when it comes to parking spaces. I mean, I know how tight it is when I used going on the connector. I know if you come out of that site and you want to take a left, good luck to you, because there's two lanes comes off the connector, and there are two lanes going on Gorm Street. And how are you going to filter through that first lane, go into the connector, over to the other two, and down? I don't know. But under the zoning code, we can't deny them because they don't have enough parking because the zoning code says they don't need any. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Might I interrupt?
Sure.
I was looking at this project, my biggest concern was parking as well. And then I went to the zoning code. I saw Member Walker had a copy of it, and I'm looking at it, and I'm like, where is this zone? And I found it in Section 9.8. It's the mid-rise multifamily overlay. And I think we're under the mistaken impression that parking is not required. And I don't believe that's correct by my reading. It has a specific provision, it says 9.8.5 parking requirements. And it says in that that it's generally one space per dwelling unit, and if you're going to have any that are off-site, they need to be within 1,200 feet of the building, which seems to me to be consistent with what they're talking about, this MBTA zoning, you know, creating housing that's nearby. I can, I can, I made a copy of it, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry I didn't make multiple copies. But when I'm looking at it.
Yeah. Mr., just for clarification, though, just so we don't mislead here, it says you cannot, what this has meant, parking at a rate of up to one space. In other words, you can't require more than one space, correct? I just want to make sure that that's.
Yeah. That's exactly it. But it seems to be saying, look, the, the housing is as of right. It doesn't mean you could put up a nine-story building and have no parking. That was my reading of this 9.8. And I don't know why I was reading it, but when I was reading it and going through it, I just think that we have the ability to say, look, one space per dwelling unit.
So I'm sure you guys did your homework, rode around the neighborhood, checked it out. So I'm just going to read you some of my notes here. I'm opposed to the 463 Gorm Street project, the former Heinz Tavern, in its present form. As a resident and business owner on Highland Street my whole life, the neighborhood has grown over the years. Currently, our neighborhood is very condensed. It will be dangerous, difficult, and heavy traffic for anyone trying to leave that site, the former Heinz Tavern, anytime during the day. From 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 in the morning, they're lined up to get on the connector. From 3:30 in the afternoon till 6:30 at night, they're lined up to get off the connector. As proposed, the 39 units, roughly that represents 80 cars. They have room for 15. Like my neighbor said, nobody's going to walk over to the Gallagher Terminal. I invite anybody on the board to park in my funeral home parking lot and take a walk over to the depot and to see how easy it is to do that. Right now, we let the Rogers School use our parking lot at the funeral home every day. There's not enough parking for the teachers, for the parents to pick up their kids. Enterprise Bank, as already mentioned, uses half their parking lot already, and they're not going away. Very, very congested neighborhood. The parking is the biggest issue. It's .3 spaces per unit. And if you can only imagine, let's take one, two, three, four. Let's take six chairs out of that—from away from you guys, and we'll see musical chairs, who's going to get the one or two chairs left. It's not fair to the folks that are going to move in there. Everyone who goes home has a right, a privilege, and an expectation that they can park their car close enough to carry their groceries in the house and not have to come back outside. I know it's a hard thing for these folks to try to move into the neighborhood. It looks like a beautiful building, but I'm very sorry, you just don't have enough parking. That's my biggest gripe, and the congestion on Gorm Street, you've got to spend a morning there. Again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? 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 Not opposition? Hearing none? That portion of the public chamber gets closed. I'll just start off by saying that—so since the city council, they created the multifamily mid-rise overlay district, they don't need one parking spot. They don't need any. None. So our hands are tied when it comes to parking spaces. I mean, I know how tight it is when I used going on the connector. I know if you come out of that site and you want to take a left, good luck to you because there's two lanes comes off the connector and there are two lanes going on Gorm Street. And how are you going to filter through that first lane, go into the connector, over to the other two, and down? I don't know. But under our zoning code, we can't deny them because they don't have enough parking because the zoning code says they don't need any. So—
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Might I interrupt?
Sure.
I was looking at this project. My biggest concern was parking as well. And then I went to the zoning code. I saw—Member Walker had a copy of it. And I'm looking at it, and I'm like, where is this zone? And I found it in Section 9.8. It's the mid-rise multifamily overlay. And I think we're under the mistaken impression that parking is not required. And I don't believe that's correct by my reading. It has a specific provision. It says 9.8.5 parking requirements. And it says in that that it's generally one space per dwelling unit, and if you're going to have any that are off-site, they need to be within 1,200 feet of the building, which seems to me to be consistent with what they're talking about, this MBTA zoning, you know, creating housing that's nearby. I can—I made a copy of it, Mr. Chairman, and I'm sorry I didn't make multiple copies. But when I'm looking at it—
Yeah. Mr—just for clarification, though, just so we don't mislead here, it says you cannot—what this has meant parking at a rate of up to one space. In other words, you can't require more than one space, correct? I just want to make sure that that's—
Yeah. That's exactly it. But it seems to be saying, look, the housing is as of right. It doesn't mean you could put up a nine-story building and have no parking. That was my reading of this 9.8. And I don't know why I was reading it, but when I was reading it and going through it, I just think that we have the ability to say, look, one space per dwelling unit, you can—if parking is close enough, you can use that, but you need to have some sort of lease or some sort of agreement. And when I looked at—oh, what did I see? I looked at, how far is it to walk to the Gallagher Terminal? And it's about nine minutes, which is about .4 miles, four-tenths of a mile. And I'm saying, all right, how far is .4 miles? It's 2,112 feet. So it's almost twice the distance of what they're saying in our zoning ordinance. So I'm not sure that they could use the Gallagher Terminal, and I'm not sure I'd want to walk across Thondike Street myself. So I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chairman—
That's okay.
—but when I saw this, I'm like, this kind of makes sense. I feel like, you know, the planning board and the city council set things—put things together to make sure that, yes, we could get these larger buildings and we could get more housing, but I don't think it's—you get to do whatever you want.
So Dylan, I'm going to refer to you because I know staff has told us plenty of times in the past that when it comes to the—that zone, the multifamily mid-rise overlay district, that they don't need the parking.
That's correct. They do not need parking. That is—that statement in the zoning ordinance is stating there's a parking maximum of up to one space may be provided. So the applicant is able to provide up to one space. If they wish to provide more than one space per unit, they would need to get a variance from the zoning board. So that's—that statement is for a parking maximum. It's stating up to one may be.
With respect to the—
That was the intent of the zoning—
With respect to the DPD, I think they're wrong. Absolutely wrong. That would be like saying you could put up a nine-story building and it doesn't matter what you have for parking. So if that's the case, I think—we're really, really should look over our entire zoning code because that's crazy. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Anything further, Peter? I mean, Dylan, I'm sorry.
That—I mean, that is what it's saying. There's parking maximum with no parking required.
Yeah, okay. I just know like in the past, we've seen this. Staff keeps telling us—and you've been here for a couple of these that says they don't need the parking.
I keep hearing that, and I think it's crap. I think I've said it. I think it's absolute crap. And then when I'm reading this section, it seems to indicate—why bother having parking in here? I mean, if you're not going to have—if you have no parking requirement, why have it in here? That doesn't make any sense at all.
And the argument is saying there's a maximum you can have.
Which is crazy. What are you going to have, like 300 spaces for a four—you know, four-unit building? That's crazy. That's nonsensical. So I totally disagree with the DPD on that issue. And I think we have the ability, based on our own zoning ordinance, to say it needs to have one space. Now, as far as the building, really liked it. As far as what they did, really liked what they did for the landscaping. They worked with DPD. Liked the building. My suggestion would be add another story and you put parking underneath, as far as I see. I liked the building. Do I agree with Mr. McDonough that it's horrible for traffic? Yep. But that's—I think our hands are somewhat limited to the extent of they say this use is okay. Then the question is, what sort of parameters can we set on it?
Thank you. Mr. Bouchard?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I—Mr. Sullivan answered my question regarding the enterprise parking because I pulled in there, it looked very official with the signs, and my first thought was I suspect they—when they got their approval to bill, that was a condition of the approval. So I was concerned in what was going to happen with that. I have the—you know, the section on the parking, 9.8.5, I guess—in I—in—we can respectfully disagree the meaning of what the parking at a rate of up to one space unit may be provided on-site. But I guess my question that I have with this section is that—to the point of Mr. Tanzar is that any off-street parking must be located within 1,200 feet of the building. And even in the testimony this evening and in the paperwork, it's indicating that the Gallagher Terminal is 1,500 feet from the building. And so now, you know, and it's not as the crow flies. It's 1,200 feet of primary building entrance along a publicly accessible and ADA-compliant walking route. So have we done that exercise to establish that?
Yes, so the plan that you have behind you there shows the site. And this here is the MBTA commuter rail. So it's an eight-minute walk and .3 miles from the site approximately.
And what do you have for a distance?
Let's see here. It's about 1,500.
See, and again, it specifically says located within 1,200 feet.
And that's to the door here? Is that what it's saying, to the door at this location here?
Yes. Any off-site parking must be located 1,200 feet from a primary building entrance along a publicly accessible and ADA-compliant walking route. I mean, it makes it very clear. It's not a—you know, maybe you—it's very clear what the requirement is. Dylan, did DPD take a look at that at all?
Yeah, we've looked at that many times. We—the parking statement?
The distance.
The distance. That distance means—is referring to like someone couldn't develop like a lot as for parking specifically to this would be how I would read that.
It says any off-site parking must be located within 1,200 feet. There's nothing ambiguous about that.
Right, I mean, there's many garages in the city that are with—that are outside of 1,500 feet, but that wouldn't prevent someone from developing a property downtown if it was over 1,500 feet.
I'm just saying, I'm just reading from 9.8.5. It's pretty specific.
Right, but there is no minimum parking requirement. It's allowing up to one space per unit.
Right.
And it says, any off-site parking that you're providing in addition must be located within 1,200 feet. The garage exists.
So your basic thing, if the board so deems that there needs to be some additional parking, it needs to be within 1,200 square feet?
If—I mean, so there's no off-street parking requirement? But it does say if you're going to have parking more than one space per unit, it needs to be within 1,200 feet. As it refers to the garage, I don't—I don't know what to say.
You can read it, right? It's pretty straightforward.
I'm not sure what you're asking. Garages exist.
So the garage is saying is—from their measurement is 1,500 square feet. It's square feet, 1,500 feet. If we're saying we want to—okay, there is a need to have some additional parking. We can differ amongst ourselves whether we think people are going to walk there, and that's—we have the Transportation Management Plan, we have the bike racks, they're one-bedroom units. I mean, we've gone through this exercise before, the type of people it's attracting, probably maybe using the MBTA or the train. But again, it's just clear to me that if we're going to apply this, it's 1,200 square feet. I mean, 1,200 feet. I don't know what I'm missing.
I believe this is referring to if the developer is going to provide additional parking. Like, a garage existing is not—I would not consider a developer providing additional parking. If you disagree, you guys can certainly get a law opinion—
Yeah.
—and they can opine on that. But I'm pretty confident in my reading of it.
I'm just—
Mr. Vice Chairman? This zoning in the overlay district, there's no parking requirement—
Right.
—in the district. If we were to provide parking, we can't provide one space—more than one space per dwelling unit.
Right.
And then it goes on to say, the entirety of this parking supply may be provided off-site.
So the developer's choice, not the board's choice?
Well, I don't know how the board would have a choice if there's no parking requirement within the zone. And we're supplying 13 parking spaces on-site—
Right.
—which is not even required. I guess the intent of the overlay district was to provide more housing—
Right.
—and provide a walkable neighborhood—
Right.
—when you're in the proximity of the Gallagher Terminal, which we are. So we qualify under the MFOM zoning district. I don't know how this could—I came in on the one on Middlesex Street, same scenario—
Right, understood, understood.
No parking requirement.
I guess not. I'm just trying to get clarification for myself on—the intent— Well, I think at this point, the—in just looking for clarification on the intent of Section 9.8.5 is—and I know when this was originally looked at, the intent was that there's no required parking. If parking is going to be required, this is the guidance for it. If the builder—see, this is where I'm—now, this is where I'm kind of—where it's going a little bit sideways for me right now, right? Is if the developer wants to provide parking, they can't provide more than one. And if they—I guess—it's ambiguous the way we've worded this about the distance then, why?
But go back to what you just said. If the developer was going to provide parking, they cannot provide more than one space.
Right.
That more than one space must be located within 1,200 feet—
Right.
—if the developer is going to provide parking. We're providing 13 parking spaces on-site, which is more than is required—
Right.
—per the zoning.
And basically saying you don't fit the 1,200, but A, by the way, it's 1,500—it's 1,500 feet to the Gallagher Terminal as a compensating—
Well, we're within the overlay district.
Right.
So the overlay district is dictating that there's no parking requirement because of our proximity to the Gallagher Terminal. That's what the zoning was passed for.
Right.
So you have a walkable neighborhood. You know, people ride their bikes. You have a bike storage area. It's to promote housing without the need for the parking. But if you're going to reside in these units, you can either get an assigned parking space, one of the 13, or you can accept the fact that you don't have a parking space. And that is what the zoning is allowing us to do. They can be. I mean, we could—we could say we'll assign them to separate units. So if I don't get a parking space and I drive home at night, like you said, I come home at night and I expect to have a spot, and all the 13 spaces are gone, I wouldn't expect to park there because I know I don't have a space. We're complying with zoning.
The way I look at it, if the zoning tells the people, if you're going to move in there, you don't get a parking spot.
You don't get a parking space. Or you get one. We could make some assumptions.
Oh, when the zoning came in and was presented before us, they're saying they want to live there, they don't get a parking spot.
Right.
If you want to add something, you can. But we're not—they're saying we don't—it's going to make you have a parking spot. So like other ones that we've approved, unfortunately, and we've been told by staff several times that they don't need it because the intent was they don't need the parking, even though we disagree. But we have to conform to what the ordinance says. So a lot of these, like we've already approved three of them, people say, yeah, we know we're not going to be parking there because we know when you come home at night, we have no parking spot. So therefore, people are going to be living there, don't have cars. I mean, because they have no place to park. Especially in this neighborhood, they're not going to find a parking spot on the street.
I would take it's like living in any city. If you're living in Boston, you're walking, you're taking public transportation, you're riding your bike.
I don't like—I don't compare us to Boston. We've been told we want to be the same as Cambridge, and I said, no way in the world is Lowell the same as Cambridge. You put all those colleges and all that money in Cambridge and compare it to Lowell, it's like apples and oranges. You know, I don't compare it. I think Lowell is unique as it is. We have our own zoning code. We go with our own zoning code. We can compare it to Lawrence. People wouldn't like to have it compared to Lawrence. So I mean, but I know when this came forward, they kept telling us, when we had the whole presentation by staff, when we threw the whole thing, but a senior planner says, these new districts and downtown and everything else do not require parking. And we're like, wow. And that's what we've been told over and over again, and like, so whoever's going to move in there—
They could be wrong, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I know, I know. But this is the presentation we got, and that was a presentation that we received that also went before the council and what the council voted for.
Yeah, and once again—
Yeah.
I truly think they're wrong.
But I mean—
And that's okay. I mean, we all can have differences of opinion. But why bother putting parking at all? If there's no parking required, why bother having the provision at all? Why bother?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. I think what they're saying is, there's none required, but if they want to put some in, they can. But it can only be up to one, and then how accessible they are to any parking garage within the 1,200 or 150—you know, 1,200 feet. I mean—I mean, that was what the whole—remember, Terry, they did demonstration before us? We asked the same old questions. We got the map, all these buildings coming in, no parking. You're like, put the bike racks in. I'm like, yeah, what good is that when there's two feet of snow in the ground?
Yeah, I can't in good conscience. When I'm looking at—we keep saying we're going to rely on our zoning code. Well, this is our zoning code. All I'm doing is reading it.
Yeah, yeah.
All right? So when I read it, I disagree with Attorney Flood. I understand she has her job to represent her client, and maybe that's exactly what the Division of Planning and Development has said all along, like you said, Mr. Chairman. But I wasn't there for that, and I've sat and listened to some of this stuff for a number of meetings, and that's what forced me to actually look at the code. And the code seems to indicate that parking is required. Otherwise, they wouldn't have put it in. And what do you say? Oh, well, you can build another story if you want, you know, or you could—you could build something really nice if you want, if you're a developer. Well, you don't put that into the code. There's a reason for it. If they wanted to put, no, no parking is required, pretty easy to do. No parking is required. Four words. So I can't vote this.
Thank you. Do you have anything further you want to add or?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I—you know, I think perhaps we could even get—and I think it would be just good to move forward for additional projects, but get clarification from the DPD and the Law Department. I know the way this was drafted, and it was the intent, and it was to comply with the MBTA zoning requirements. They had a consultant work with the city, and the intent was, within that—the vicinity of the Gallagher Terminal is to not require parking. And my understanding was, the intent of this section here was that if a developer was going to supply parking, it was to make sure they don't exceed what's being— was going to supply parking, it was to make sure they don't exceed what's being described here, and more or less not to, not to dissuade the construction in the, in the zones. However, I, to, I, to, remember Tenzar's point, as he, reading it for face value, I understand where it, we read this in the context of how it was presented to us, and, and the way Attorney Flood is presenting it. And that's the way I, I take it, although I just thought it was interesting with the distance, and I think it threw me because it was in the, in the materials indicating 1,500 feet, we're 1,200 feet here, but we're basically, it's not required in the first place, but if you are going to be providing it, this is what we're looking at for guidance, or requirement, not guidance, requirement. So I would want some clarification, I think, from, from DPD along with the city's Law Department, because first of all, I don't want to have this type of discussion with the next project, right? And I don't think the applicant wants to have that, that discussion with the next project. So I think that it has to be clear. It's here for site plan review. This should have been pretty straightforward, and, but I do recognize what Member Tenzar is saying, and I suspect we should probably be looking at rephrasing of how, how this is addressed within Section 9.8, or within the entire, because the, the higher zones, the high-rise zone is just half a space per dwelling unit, maximum. And then when you get to the neighborhood district, it's different as well. But those are maximums if in fact you are so inclined to put that in your project. I don't believe that was discretionary for the board to apply. So, but as I read this, I, I don't know if it's clear to a, a board member reading it, that that was the intent.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One other thing, I actually looked at the multifamily zoning MBTA CMRs, and one of the things it talks about is site plan review. So I'm, I'm reading it, and I'm saying, all right, well, what do they say? And they said, "Site plan review shall not unreasonably delay a product, project, nor impose conditions that make it infeasible," if that's a word, "or impractical to proceed with a project that is allowed as of right and complies with applicable dimensional regulations." To me, that sounds, once again, like, we have the ability to put parameters on this MBTA zoning stuff. I would think that was the purpose of why they said, "We're going to put this, this language in the statute." So, once again, I, I don't think the MTT, MBTA zoning basically says you can do whatever you want. I don't think that's what's intended. I think it's intended to create housing, but in a reasonable way.
Thank you.
I just address that regarding the dimensional requirements. So the dimensional requirements as set forth in the zoning are maximum height, minimum lot area per unit, and minimum side yard setback. Those are the dimensional requirements set forth in the zoning for this overlay district, and we comply with all of them. We're in here tonight for site plan approval, which we comply with. We have met with the planning department several times to review these plans. We took the comments that were provided to us by all departments within the city. We revised our plans to comply with all of the departments. We submitted a traffic study showing and addressing parking and traffic within that area. Based on that, I feel as though we, we are in compliance with everything set forth in the zoning, and the site plan should be approved.
Mr. Site, any questions or comments?
I, I agree that what we need to do, clarification, to make sure that, you know, if a decision made, it's, it's what I'm saying, review the, my line, so, I'm not comfortable with all that at the time. I'd like to see that for clarification, that Bill is, you know, future decisions.
Future decisions also affect how we get a review of the plans submitted to us.
Thank you. Ms. Walker, any questions or comments?
I mean, I think it's unfortunate that there's not ample parking considering the number of units, but the way I read Section 985 is the same as Attorney Flood, that they do, it's up to them. They're not offering offsite parking, therefore it doesn't have to be within 1,200 feet, and they have the option to provide up to one space. That's the way I read it. I do think that we should all be on board about how this reads before we go forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may?
Sure, Chairman, you go ahead.
Yep. Just because we got a little off track on, on the project itself, other aspects of it. So I do want to go through certain aspects of it. Love the design of the building, love the, the way the facade is, is broken up, so you don't have that large, just flat, straight wall. So I think that, that really looks good. I, I like the, and I saw the revision for the pits for the, the trees so that they've better chance of surviving. I think that'll, that'll add to that, to that site right now. That's, that's not a very attractive looking site at the moment, so I think obviously that's going to, to add to it. I had my thoughts about the limited parking on the site. I will tell you, I wouldn't want to see a lot of parking on the site because I would hate to see a lot of cars coming out of there. I think that would add a, a real problem to that, to that location. I think if you had 39 parking spots back then, 39 cars trying to come in and out of there, I think that would probably make, make that situation worse. It's an underutilized site. It is within the, the mid-high-rise district. I was concerned about the, the enterprise parking, that's been addressed. The landscaping plan was presented, the architectural plans presented. I know engineering had, even working with the engineering department. And fire was finding economic development comments. Again, there's major improvement over the current use of the property in the support of the proposal. The, the DPD project management team, they had the comments about the, the larger pits for the trees, which you did incorporate, and I think that was a, an adjustment that will make those trees survive there, and I think that'll, again, that'll add to the streetscape. There's providing adequate fire access. On the site plan review, fire department had no comments, they were, unless there were any major change to the, to the site. Engineering had some comments, I suspect, I know you're working with engineering.
You met with the engineering department.
Yep. You mentioned the snow storage. ADA, it says a mid-block, WSR on Gorm Street does not appear to be ADA compliant. Again, I think you made revisions to the plan to accommodate all of that, right?
Yep.
Transportation demand management plan, I think incorporates all of the elements that we look for in the plan. I know the, the comments from the transportation engineer indicated that, I think, I think these were all elements that were actually in the plan, but certainly would be incorporating that. So from, from the site plan review perspective, yeah, I think, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I just will say that, based on what was raised here this evening, I would be looking, just to continue this, just to get clarification, I think it's important for this board, we should not have a project like this come before us and have this kind of misinterpretation of what's before us, so that should not happen. So especially, this should be just site plan review, it isn't a special permit, it isn't a variance, so the guidance should be here in the context in which it was approved by the city council. I believe the understanding was that there's no parking requirement, and if it was going to be a parking, this is what had to be adhered to. But to the point that, that Member Tenzar makes, is that if you, if you read this without that context, as it's written, it looks like this is the parking requirement, and there are certain maximums, but this is what you, this is the guidance for it. So I just want clarification on that for this board, so I would be looking to continue that. I'm happy with every other aspect of this project, I just want to have clarification on, on that particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Could we possibly move forward rather than continue it and make it a condition that the law department confirms that there's no parking requirement within the zoning? If it's only in here for site plan review, rather than have to have us come back? If we could just get an opinion from the law department?
I, I would be comfortable with that. I would be comfortable with that. I want it, I want it clarified, but I would be comfortable with that.
Because I think the issue here is, if we go for an opinion, I'm pretty sure, it's pretty straightforward, the DPD says there's no parking, and I get that. I mean, Dylan agrees with that, Peter agrees with that, and Francesca, who's the one who gave us the presentation, said there's no parking there. So if we want to refer to DPD, they can tell us right now, in their opinion, there's no parking there. So am I?
Mr. Chairman.
You're correct, you're correct.
So I think to be fair, it would have to be the law department.
Law department, for clarification, and I think, I think what comes out of that could be a revision to the language in here. I just saw that to, to the reader, it would be, it would be much clearer as to what the intent is.
Mr. Chairman, and I think, I think the question to the law department is, is, are we allowed to have parking requirements in an MBTA zone? That's the question, all right? Because if, if we have no.
And we're going to refer to 9.85.
Well, Mr. Chairman, hold on, there's, there's two issues here.
Yeah, it's not just MBTA.
It's, as it relates to this project, as the, it's written right before us, what, what applies to this project? That's what, that's the answer for this particular project. As we go forward, if you want to challenge what's allowed under the MBTA zoning, and we want to go through a zoning subcommittee, and we want to, that's fine, that's two different issues. So what I want is clarification as to what's written before us, and from, from the law department. So if we, if, for one thing, if you had to defend it, what is the law department going to defend, right? So if we denied it, and, and they didn't meet it, well, what's really the requirement? So I think that's important for this project before us. Beyond that, we want to get into what the MBTA zoning will require us, allow us to do. Well, right now in the zoning ordinance, this is what, this is how we have written it here. It went through, again, the city worked with a consultant, it went through two public hearings, and it was approved by the city council. So I, I just want to make sure that we're very, very clear. I understand there's a bigger issue that you're, you're asking the question, and I think from perspective of the city zoning ordinance, let's get a clarification on what we have before us, and then it'll be, quite frankly, I've been through this process before, we don't drive the process. It'll be whether or not you want to contact the city council, who wants to put it on as a motion to revisit how this is addressed, and whether or not we can change what we have here, and whether we want to, and it goes to the zoning subcommittee, and it takes a life of its, you know, from there.
But everything that you guys have been talking about is, we've been told, we've been told, we've been told. So we've been told that the MBTA districts, there's no parking requirement. That's what you guys.
No, what we've been told is, what's written here does not require any parking. And if there is going to be parking, this is the maximum, if, if, if it's going to be built, this is where the, this is where you have, I think, a good, where you bring up the, the ambiguity of the, of this. Is that, well, is this for the board to apply? Or is this if, if, if a developer is going to do it, this is what they, all right? So this is what I want clarification from the law department. That's what I'm looking for.
I got you.
Yeah, I, so.
The question would be, if we go, and then the law department agrees with that, then what happens?
Then they didn't meet the condition.
Okay. I thought you were going to point to the conditional approval.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the applicant incorporate the recommendations of the city's transportation engineer relative to the transportation management plan, that the applicant continue to work with the city's engineering department, addressing any concerns that they have with the site. The approval is subject to clarification from the city's solicitor regarding Section 9.8.5, titled Parking Requirements, and whether that is... Now, I just want to think this through for a second. You can't do it, because then if it's for the board to impose.
I think the question is to the law department is whether there are any parking requirements within this overlay district.
But then if they say yes, but then, so what? But that doesn't do anything to the approval.
If they say yes, we'd have to come back in to address it. I mean, I don't believe there are any parking requirements in the overlay. So if we get the opinion.
Yeah, I guess there, there are no, nah, hm. Dylan, you got any thoughts on that?
If the, if the law department states that there is a parking requirement, they would then need a variance from the zoning board at minimum. I can speak to that certainly, but.
Actually, it would be a special permit from this board.
Well, no, there's no special permits that would apply to this.
No?
No.
Wouldn't it be, if we have a site plan, and it's a site plan approval? From what I've seen so far, generally that's when they put the special permit with the site plan. No?
This would be a variance, not a special permit. And again, I don't believe that parking is required, but if the law department were determined it is, it would trigger a need for a variance, which is, can only be granted by the zoning board.
So maybe a determination from the law department that there is no parking requirement pertaining to this development. And if they say there is, we have to go into the zoning board and get a variance for relief.
But it also says in this district, they don't need any parking. It's ambiguous on the way to how you look at it. Planning staff is telling us they don't need any parking at all.
Yeah.
It says that, I mean, it's interpretation. I mean, we can read it, I mean, we got two lawyers here, another lawyer sitting over there, you know? Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's a determination, yeah. I mean, like I say, when it was presented to us, planning staff, the senior planner said, "This was creative, the idea was no parking at all." I mean, do I like the fact that there's no parking? No. No. But as a legal attorney, when I read a statute of an ordinance, and it tells me something I don't like, and I know it's legal and binding, I got no choice but to vote for it. If I vote against it, then they're going to take us up, and the city's going to lose a lot of money, because we're sitting there thumbing our noses at the ordinance. And being a lawyer, I think I know a little better than I just sit there whether I like it or not. Perfect example, when they want to share a driveway up in Belvedere, and I said, no, they should have their own driveways. They have plenty of land up there. Zoning code said they can have shared driveways. Attorney fled, father came in, said to me, Mr. Lenny, I'd love to, but they're allowed to do it, whether you like it or not. And I'm like, you're right. So it doesn't matter, our personal preferences don't count.
What is the possibility of giving a caution to your wife?
It's not up to us. Nope.
That's why we're here. Exactly, that's why we're here.
Well, I know why we're here, is to read the statute and do what they interpreted it. And they came before us, the ordinance said, in this zone, there'll be no parking required.
Sir, with all due respect, we see the building, it's a city, for all...
Yeah. I mean, he's in a body, he knows where the building is. He lives right behind it. I mean, I can honestly say, I've been in the building when it was operational. You ever been to a football game here in Lowell on 10 o'clock in the morning? Where do you think people went, before and after the game? Mr. Tenzar? Yeah? I mean, let's face it, Lowell, Lawrence, the old days, who went to Heinz's first or after?
You sure want to say that? I didn't want to check on this law. Let's check on the law.
That's what we're trying to do.
I would respect that the public hearing has been closed, so can we just move forward?
Dylan, can you repeat that, how we drafted that condition now at this point?
Sure. Let me know if you need any edits, but the applicant is subject to clarification from the city solicitor regarding section 9.8.5, and whether there is a parking requirement pertaining to this development.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Yeah. Because that falls in under this chapter and section, under the...
And it's specific, so this is the whole.
Right, right.
And it's not dealing with just the...
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's interpretation, so we get it back in the law department, whether we agree with what they say or not. I mean, we've had, we've reached out to them before, a lot of times we agreed, sometimes we disagreed, but then we go forward with what they tell us.
In addition to, we are a term of end this...
Well, the question is, Mr. Dunn, if it says no parking, it don't matter how close they get, our term of end is. And by reading it, the way it says it here, it says, if they want to put parking in, then they can conserve it. But they don't want to put any parking in, then they don't have to.
But there are a lot of ingredients here, but the primary ingredient was, it has to be 1200 feet.
If they want to put parking. If they don't want to put parking in, they don't have to be within 1200 feet.
Do you think they're going to need traces of what?
Bingo.
I'm sure. That's why the producers agreed to leave them there.
Yeah, if they want to put 13 spaces on there, they can. But if they want to put no spaces there, they can't. I mean, do I like it? No. Did I like it when they came in? No. Wasn't my decision.
I understand you're agreeing to the proposal that they talked about, but what if the 13 spaces are there?
What I'm saying is, I don't think they need parking at all. That's what I'm saying.
But the difference between writing the project, 13 spaces there.
Yeah. They don't need any, but if they want to put some there, they can.
And if they do, they have to be 1200 feet.
They can put them on site, but if they don't have them on site, then they have, if they want to, then they can add them, and they have to be within 1200. If they don't want to add anymore, they don't need the 1200. So if they said, we don't want anymore, we don't need the 12.
I'm not supposed to buy a lot of things like yours, but I understand that.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it, I mean, some people like the fact no parking, but like I said to begin with, if, would I buy a place there? No, because I like having my car. Bingo.
So you just want to get tax money?
Yeah, and they don't, yeah, you got it. You got it.
All right, so Dylan...
Not going to make the motion, but...
So we've got three conditions. Dylan, could you just read those back, please?
Yes.
The applicant shall incorporate the transportation engineer's recommendations into their TDM plan. The applicant shall work with the engineering department to address any site concerns. The applicant is subject to clarification from the city solicitor regarding section 9.8.5, and whether there is a parking requirement pertaining to this development.
See, I think the clarification, not whether or not there's a parking requirement, is whether or not, and I know...
May I say something? From what I'm hearing is that we just want to focus on whether this 9.8...
Applies. Applies to this project.
Applies to this project or not.
Yeah.
If it's applied to this project, then, you know, then let us know, so that we can clearly, you know, we can decide easier, make a decision easier.
Yeah.
I just don't know, by making that a conditional approval, whether that, it's not a reach back, you can't come back before us. It's because, it's not saying, it's just saying, well, yeah, you can apply this, and then if you do apply it, then it's parking up to one. So that's, I don't think it's accomplishing what I...
I think the issue is, is there a parking requirement for this project located within the overlay district? And then if they say yes, 9.8.5 applies to you. I think that's the question, because it's been put out there that when you're in the overlay district, you have no parking requirement. 9.8.5 states, if you are going to give parking, you can have no more than one space.
Right.
So I think the question for this project is, are we okay with 13 parking spaces when we don't have a park, or is there a parking requirement?
Okay. I just want to make sure we're comfortable with the language on it.
I think what the board needs to focus on is, in the overlay district, is there a requirement for parking? I've been in before you on other projects. Parking requirement in the same district.
No, I understand, this came up as a, hadn't been looked at quite with this lens before.
Correct.
So I get it. I certainly understand.
And in the past, DPD has said there's no parking.
They say there's no parking.
And we went along with their recommendation, right.
And we've met with them.
And now Mr. Tenzar is saying, well, I'm reading a little differently. So the board's like, well, we're listening to Attorney Tenzar, and maybe do we need further clarification going forward? I mean, we're just trying to simplify things instead of complicate them, and instead of having this discussion every time we have one of these zoning...
Oh, I intend this to be the last time we have this conversation.
But I think it's very basic. Is there a parking requirement in the MF...
Overlay district, and if so, does 9.8.5 apply?
MFOM overlay district.
All right, we're good with the language on that, then, Dylan.
So the question is...
Do you want to read to me what you want me to write down?
Does it apply in the, yeah, does it apply in this district?
Is there a parking requirement in the MFOM district?
Yeah, and does this apply?
And if so, does 9.8.5 parking requirement apply?
Yeah.
So do you want me to add at the end, pertaining to this development?
I don't know if the 9.8.5 though, because if you say, if so, does that apply? I think the question is...
Very question is, does that apply?
Is there a parking requirement? That's very basic.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that's what we need.
Yeah. Can you read that back one more time?
We should have Peter here, right? He's the tenographer.
I only added like a small part, so I'm not sure if I was understanding the last one correctly, but applicant is subject to clarification from the city solicitor regarding section 9.8.5, and whether this is a parking, whether there is a parking requirement pertaining to this development in the MFOM district.
I don't think we should have the nine, not pertaining to this project. I think the issue is, is there a parking requirement in the MFOM district? And then if they say yes, it is, 9.8.5 applies. But I think that's the question, it's very basic, one sentence.
I still, well, yeah, okay.
And then if you guys want to go into the 9.8.5 later...
Oh, that's the language on that, that's a whole other issue. That's why I didn't want to blur, I didn't want to mix it with this. That's a whole other issue.
I agree, it's a total separate issue.
It's taking on a bigger philosophical thought on the whole thing.
Right.
I get it, yeah. All right.
So do you want to, is there a parking requirement in this?
The MFOM district.
Yep, yes.
Okay.
So you make a motion?
Okay, second, yeah, we got a second over there.
Okay, so the motion was made in favor of the site plan, and Mr. Sarr's second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes, and any in opposition?
Me.
Okay, so we have four in favor, one against for the site plan, with the conditions, and hopefully we get a recommendation back from the law department to clear up any ambiguity that we have regards to this zoning district. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Left away from the law department, and if they're nonconforming, they'll be coming back before us.
Have we seen another poster?
Yes.
Yeah, so if the law department says they need parking in this zone, this project is coming back before us. Yeah, so we post it for another public hearing. Yeah, yeah. Thank you too, thank you, sir, thank you, Mrs. Zane, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Take care. Yeah.
Small world. Ain't nothing personal, Larry.
Hey.
I don't know what my legacy is, zoning ordinance. Will you check the zoning book back on that? No, I can't. Are you kidding me? Dylan didn't have the zoning... I don't have someone to explain it. I think it's so difficult. You know, hey, what I did, you know, you got to make a city, you know, I can handle it, you know? Who is who? Yeah, that's what we kind of follow, if I'm like 12 minutes at one time. I'm like, if I'm supposed to know what I'm doing, it's...
the historic board. So usually we appoint one of the new members, and any of the new members have a concern and be on the board? Not when you need an appointment.
Okay. Dan, you made that motion?
I'm not going to stick around with the boss. Cherry, let Cherry do it.
Thank you for speaking up, yes. So I will nominate, we'll see a walker to the historic board to be the planning board representative. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, just let you know that Mr. Lockhart served for years, and he cheered the historic board representing the planning board, and so actually, you are following somebody that really took that seriously and did a real good job for the planning board in the city of Lowell, so I think you'll enjoy your term on there.
So motion made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition here, none? The motion carries. Moving along, do any of the board members have any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
To Jerry's point, going forward, I do think we need an opinion from the city solicitor's office. In an MBTA zone, can we have parking requirements as a city? That's the simple question moving forward.
I agree.
And so if that can be given to the city solicitor's office, I don't know how that would be done, but...
So two ways it happens. One, now that we made the motion, DPD will reach out to them and let them know that the motion was made. The law department will call either myself or one of the other board members for clarification. And that's what, what do you want? What's the issue? We have a question on this, and we'll say, this came up. And sometimes I'll tell them what my point of view is. I said, but you might want to speak with other board members who have different opinions on, maybe you want to speak with Mr. Tenzar, you might want to speak with Mr. Beshat, and the law department will call and speak with you guys. Now, there's another way, is sometimes, instead of a public hearing, we can make a referral to the law department ourselves. I've reached out to the law department one time and said, I have a question on this, can you address it for me? And they came back and they gave it to me, and as a result of that, that wasn't a public opinion, because it wasn't a public hearing. So the issue that I had, they just came back and gave me their informal opinion of what they thought it was, because it wasn't a public opinion, so we think it was a public hearing. So my question was, you think we can do this or that? And they came back and reached this and says, Tom, I don't think so. Oh, yeah, I think you're right, that's a variance. And that way, it's not a public hearing, and it's not a public posting from the law department.
So...
On this case, it would be a public opinion.
Yeah, I think we would need that, because we need the guidance.
Yeah, so as a result of that...
Well, can I just clarify, we need the guidance.
Well, we'll get something back from the law department.
Yeah, so the clarification right now is, the wording that we currently have, is it worded correctly, okay? The bigger picture about in the MBTA zoning as written from the Commonwealth is, can we do that? Well, now that would then, if that's what we want to do, and let's say the solicitor says, no, clearly this, there's no parking requirement as we have written it here in this, in the city of Lowell, and let's say you're saying, you know, hey, I want to know under MBTA zoning, can we do that? Then that has to be an entire zoning proposal change, and, you know, coming from the planning board, that goes nowhere. We know that from years of working with that. That would have to be an initiative that would be taken up with a city councilor, or if DPD wanted to take that initiative. We've tried to direct TBD before on certain things in the past, long before Dylan was here, and quite frankly...
Didn't go anywhere.
Didn't go anywhere. All right, so it has to come from a city councilor or Department of Planning and Development to say, hey, you know, we passed this, I know we had a consultant, we know the city council passed it, we want to revisit this, and we want to put some, because it was determined that you can have some parking requirements, and this is what we want. So just to make the path very clear on that, that's really how that flows.
To your point, the high-rise also has some sort of parking, something or other.
Again...
So that's why I'm wondering, it's not only just 9.8.5.
Oh, no, no, but the intent was to say the same thing. If that's going to be the maximum, if that's going to, if you are going to provide parking, we don't want you to provide more than this. That's what the guidance is. It's saying, look, if you want to come in and build this, we don't want you, it's not to flood it with cars, it's to use public transportation.
But you could just say, no parking, no parking required.
I understand.
It's nonsensical to put any sort of parking instructions that developers could just ignore.
Yeah, so on this, they'll make the referral, and they'll get back to us. Like I said, most likely, a lot of...
But it does apply to 9.8.5, 9.7 is the high-rise stuff.
There's three different zones, the neighborhood ones as well.
So the law department might refer to one of us, or more than one of us, to make sure that they get our question directly, you know, how the issue came up or whatever, and then they'll draft an opinion, and there'll be a public opinion.
But on this language, I want to clarify, because as a board, we should not be confused about it.
Yeah.
So that needs to be clarified.
I would agree.
Yeah.
We might as well just refer to the law department, because we know where the planning staff stands, so.
I guess...
Either asking them, we can just ask them right now, like I said, they've been telling us that by the lawn, so that's why I said, just, you don't have to refer it to both of them, just do it right to the law department.
So something on an unrelated matter, but for further guidance, did you see in the paper, they were mentioning the Chumsford for the ADUs? They had certain things that the parking needs to be...
One.
Yeah, something like that.
No more than one.
What is the situation for Lowell?
Yeah, well, a lot of what Chumsford did is kind of, it's in there anyways, they just were reinforcing it.
Okay.
One of them, because they have big lots, that if you had to detach, you couldn't put it in the front, front yard.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, only one per unit. I mean, that certainly, yeah, it's limited to what you can do.
My question was, is what could we do as a planning board to help with that?
That would be, honestly, that would be DPD.
Oh, is that DPD?
Yeah.
Why do we leave so much up to DPD? Poor Dylan, I mean, Dylan, you don't got enough on your plate here?
All the council can bring it in and put the regulations in.
A council, a councilor could bring it up and say, you know, we should look at this, and it would then be sent to the zoning subcommittee and DPD, and then they...
I got you.
And like, anything else, Dan, as you know, it would have to fall within the rem of chapter 40, you know?
Yep. Yep.
If it steps outside the rem, no good.
Yep, yep.
It has to be, like, all zoning through the whole state of Massachusetts has to fall under 40.
Right.
No matter how you look at it, if you step out, you know, you can fine tune, but if you go too broad, uh-uh, it's no good.
Yep.
Illegal.
A lot of what they put forward is not really, it was more dressing than anything else that wasn't going.
Got you. Okay. Window dressing?
Yeah.
I got you.
Well, one of the main issues came up, that ADU was detached or not detached, you know? And that was kind of separating them. And even the council, when they were talking about before, they were talking about limited a certain amount of them in per district.
Yeah, yeah. All of that's off the table now.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the issue. Yeah, they kind of do that now. No, it's just single family by right. So no longer single family.
Yeah, single, my darling. Yeah.
Anything else? Any board members? If not, we can hand a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Sarr. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned, cannot...
No, Dan, I will tell you, it...